Yeah, we're ready.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Welcome and thank you. We're going to call to order the Village of Pelles Park Council Meeting for Monday, February 24th. Would the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Polk. Mayor Milovich Walters.
Present. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting from February 10, 2025. If there are no questions or changes, I seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and second. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk. Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. Moving on to recognition, proclamations, and appointments and presentations, it's our Unsung Heroin Award presentation. This is the Peggy Monty's Unsung Heroin Award, and I'd like to begin by extending sincere gratitude to the 17th District Cook County Commissioner Sean Morrison and the 17th District Women's Commissioner Melissa Bukowicz, who is here with us this evening, for being here and helping us celebrate this year's unsung heroine. Each year, in honor of Women's History Month, Cook County presents the Unsung Heroin Award to 18 women, one from each district and one countywide, who have made a vital, yet often unrecognized, contributions to their communities, families, and professions. Consistent with the purpose of the Women's History Month, this award is designed to retell and tell the story of powerful, powerful impact that women have had throughout history on the development of our social, cultural, economic, and political institutions. In this spirit, Cook County honors these remarkable women as a way to bring their stories to light, to thank them, and to celebrate the achievements of the many women throughout the history of Cook County whom they represent. So once again, we are proud to celebrate one of our own as the recipient of this prestigious award, Mary Ann Perkins. Now I know Mary Ann is totally shocked because I asked her to come here in favor to me. To indulge me in just coming to the meeting this evening, and she had no idea what we had in store for her. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Mary Ann, okay? Mary Ann is a retired nurse and has been an active member of our community for over 30 years. Her dedication to service began when her children attended Pelles West Elementary School, where she volunteered as room mom, hot dog lady, picture lady, and a music booster. And she spent 31 years as a nurse at St. Francis Hospital before retiring in 2009. Following her retirement, Mary Ann deepened her commitment to the Pelles Park community by joining the Pelles Park Women's Club. Over the past 14 years, she's held multiple leadership roles, including Social and House Chairman, Blood Drive Chairman, International Outreach Chairman, Spring Luncheon Chairman, Second Vice President, and a member of the 120th Anniversary Committee. But my favorite is that for the last 11 consecutive years, she spearheaded the blood drive for the Women's Club. Beyond the Women's Club, Mary Ann has generously volunteered her time with the Honor Flight Network, Garden Guild, and the Center. Known for her warm smile and unwavering dedication, she is a cherished presence at community events, embodying the spirit of service and leadership. Her commitment to helping others and her leadership in numerous initiatives make her a truly deserving recipient of the Unsung Heroin Award. We celebrate her achievements and thank her for her unwavering contributions, which continue to inspire all of us around her. I'm inspired by you. I want to thank you. Please come up here and let us present you with this. And there isn't lunch in, when is it?
March 25th. The Honorable Chief and Club will be presented with a report from all the Board of Cook County Commissioners. There will be some guests. We will do all the final details, but this is one of the practices honoring wonderful women like you and all of you in your community. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. You don't have to say something. You can say something. This is your floor right now. I will hold it.
I'm just so nervous because I didn't know this.
Well, that was the idea. I wanted to surprise you.
Thank you very much. I'm just overwhelmed. And I'm just so happy to live in Pelles Park. And I love doing what I do here, what I can give to our community. One of my favorite things is, of course, the Pelles Park Women's Club. But I run the Blood Drive for the last 11 years, and that is more important than a lot of things that I have done because I'm very proud of that. Hope I can continue that. And there's probably a lot of people here that probably want to give blood at my Blood Drive. Mayor Mahoney, Mayor Mahoney does it now. Well, there's some that give that have problems, but anyway, it's just something that is really in my heart. And Rick's mom, I worked with Rick's mom at St. Francis Hospital, and she was such a gem. And we've learned so much from Dorothy. And I just really loved her, and I love you too. I love all of you guys. And just thank you very much. I'm just, it's just such a surprise.
And Bruce was in on it.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I know many of you came here for Mary Ann, and I know that this is going to be a tough act to follow with our exciting presentation of Pelles Park's 2024 Audit Presentation. So if you don't want to stay for Lauderback and Amen's presentation, I mean, I don't have to, but it is kind of exciting, and it's good to know what we're doing with the money here in Pelles Park. So would you like to introduce Commissioner Reed?
Good evening. The state of Illinois requires the state of Illinois requires that the accounts and funds of each municipality be audited. The village has hired the accounting firm of Lauderback and Amen to complete the audit of the village's fiscal year 2024. Lauderback and Amen has more than 25 years of experience in providing accounting services, including audit services to local governments in the Chicago land area. National audit standards require the auditors present the status of the village's latest audit to the village council. With us tonight is Brad Porter from Lauderback and Amen. He will provide a brief overview of the fiscal year 2024 audit, as well as the annual financial report. Brad is also available to answer any questions the commissioners, the council members, I'm sure, excuse me, may have. Please welcome Brad Porter from Lauderback and Amen. Brad?
Good evening, everyone. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Brad Porter. I'm here on behalf of Lauderback and Amen as the principal overseeing the village's financial statement audit process. Mayor, you stole my one-liner. That's what it is. I just got to move past it. But before I begin, I wanted to give a special thank you to Allison and her team. It is certainly no easy task jumping in after year-end, but before audit prep, before a software conversion, so on, so forth. But she exceeded our expectations tenfold. So we really appreciate her willingness to communicate effectively throughout the entirety of the audit process, and we look forward to ensuring that the audit is submitted in accordance with the October 27th or 29th deadline next year. At the conclusion of our audit process, we issued three pieces of required communication, the first of which is what we call our SAS 114 letter. In accordance with Statement on Auditing Standard Number 114, we are required to state whether or not we had any disagreements or difficulties. And I'm happy to report that within the body of that letter, you will find no such disagreements or difficulties noted. The second piece of required communication is what we call our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's my understanding everybody has received a copy of our audit as well as the management letter, so feel free to follow along. I'll keep it very brief. I know there's over 150 pages of information here. So my job tonight is to ensure that I am breaking it down into a more simple, user-friendly format. So we'll start with page 10. On page 10, you'll find what we call our Certificate of Achievement Award. I always like to start with the good news that the village was the recipient of that award once again for April 30, 2023. We will be using this report to submit for the fiscal year 2024 award, and would anticipate no hurdles in receiving that award once again. So congratulations. Ultimately, this award is the highest form of financial reporting excellence that any governmental entity can receive. So there's a very detailed, lengthy list of compliance requirements that the finance team, once again, you know, kind of spent that extra effort and attained again for fiscal year 2024. Moving on to page 13. On page 13, you'll find our Independent Auditor's Report. This is the most important page. I know our words are nice and all, but this is the most important page within your audit document. Our job as your audit firm is to ensure that we're generating an opinion on the financial statements that are provided to us. And I'm happy to report that for the fiscal year ended April 30, 2024, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest form of opinion that any governmental entity can receive. You're noticing trends here. Ultimately, an unmodified opinion states that as your auditors, we believe the financial statements to be presented fairly in all material aspects, and that there are sound internal controls in place throughout the various internal control functions of the village, receipting, disbursements, payroll, et cetera. Moving on to page 17. If you're going to spend time and energy in this audit document, I would tend to encourage you it be on this section here. Pages 17 through 28 are what we call our Management's Discussion and Analysis. What you'll see here is words, right? Not financial statements. Sometimes the narrative tends to be a little bit easier to digest than the Statement of Activities or some of the other various financial statements reported in your audit. So I would highly encourage you as a board to spend most of your time and energy within this section. You're going to walk away with a pretty good bird's eye view of fiscal year 2024. Now, just one quick financial highlight. Again, I know it's February now. We're reporting April financial information, so I just wanted to highlight on page 37. Our general fund had an increase in fund balance of $213,000, which was approximately 5% over the previous fiscal year, which obviously we like increases, a very stable increase for fiscal year 2024. Now, we'll move on to our management letter, which is the second bound document that you have in front of you. Oftentimes, my least favorite part of my presentation, but fortunately enough, and again, you're going to notice a trend here, we had no current recommendations as a result of our fiscal year 2024 year-end audit process. Ultimately, the purpose of this document is to ensure that we can communicate any internal control weaknesses that we've identified, any best practices that we see across some of our other municipal clients, as well as some upcoming accounting pronouncements that could have an impact on the village. So no current recommendations from the fiscal year 2024 audit. We had a couple prior recommendations that we've included status updates for, which were issued in fiscal '23 or prior. That concludes my coverage of the audit. I'm happy to answer any questions, comments, or concerns.
Council members, anybody have anything? No? Jeez, thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you. All right. Well, that was good news too, right? All right. There are no hearings today, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A. To approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated February 24, 2025, in the amount of $523,146.91. I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and second. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. Does anyone have anything of old business? There are no Board Commissioner Committee recommendations, so I'll move on to information and updates, Public Works and Streets and Recreation Report. Commissioner Patan.
Thank you, Mayor. For tonight's Public Works and Street, there are three items of discussion if we need to. And the first one deals with our televising of our sanitary sewer, something that we've been doing in the past as well. Little background for those of you who are here, the Village of Pelles Park is required by the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. We require to meet certain short-term requirements in effort to reduce inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer. The village has smoke-tested and televised sewers identified as possible high risk for infiltration over the last four years. Public Works asked for and received a three proposal to televise the last section of pipe, 17,685 linear feet of pipe, to be determined for high risk. Proposals were submitted by National Power Rotting for a cost of $66,375. Bizu Sewer, sorry, came in at $49,694.11. And finally, the third proposal from Dukes came in at $85,137. So the money for this has been budgeted in the '24 and '25 budget. All three contractors are experienced and qualified for the work. Public Works has verified that the company with the lowest proposal will provide all the detail and reporting necessary to the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. So staff recommends approving the lower bid from Bizu Sewer. Any questions before I ask for a motion? Okay. So I moved to forego any of the formal bidding process and approved the proposal from Bizu Sewer to televise the remaining 17,685 linear feet of sanitary sewer, determined to be at high risk for infiltration and inflow in that amount of $49,694.11.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and second. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Thank you. The second item on our agenda is to upgrade the 120th and 88th Street Sanitary Sewer Lift Station. The village is in the process of upgrading the 11 sanitary sewer lift stations. This budget year, the Rominga Station and the Old Creek Station were scheduled to be done. Old Creek is nearly complete. After discussion and the utility, 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 help me out, guys. Utility, I'm not saying it right.
Utility.
Thank you, department. Oh, gosh. It was decided to push Rominga until next year and do the 120th Street, 88th Street Station this year. 120th is older and has no upgrades since installation. So we requested proposals from the contractors that have done this type of work in the village over the last 10 years. The proposals include a new control cabinet, new controls, new pumps and floats, and why am I having a hard time tonight? Contact, connectivity. I think, I think, I think Mayor is making me nervous. I see it. Oh, gosh. To a mobile network for emergency alerts. The proposals from the Metropolitan Industries was $37,234, and from Flow Technics, $30,507. The village also contacted two electricians for the prices on the necessary wiring. The proposals were from contractors who have done similar work in the past. Davecom Electric at $8,950, and Elliott Electric at $18,050. The village also received a proposal from Ares to bypass pump any sewage while the work is going on for a cost of $4,669.06. With all that being said, Public Works has received the proposals and recommends the combination of Flow Technics, Davecom, and Ares for the total amount of $44,126.06 to be approved. Staff has recommended approving these proposals, and I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. Thank you. I moved to forego the formal bidding process and approve the proposals from Flow Technics, Davecom, and Ares in the amount of $44,126.06 to upgrade that 120th Street and sanitary sewer lift station.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and second. If there are no questions or discussion, deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk. Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Last is to replace the double gate at Wolf Road Cell Tower site. The old wooden gate for the fence enclosure enclosure at the Wolf Road Cell Tower has deteriorated to the point where it cannot be repaired. Public Works received a quote from Peerless Fence in the amount of $5,901 to replace the wooden gate at the galvanized, to replace the wooden gate with a galvanized steel gate. The cost for this repair was included in the '24-'25 budget. Staff also recommends approving the proposal from Peerless Fence to replace the gate. I move to approve the proposal from Peerless Gate in the amount of $5,901 to replace the wooden gate at the Wolf Road Cell Tower site with a galvanized steel gate.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and second. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk. Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Thank you for that. And that concludes my report on Public Works and Streets. And moving on to recreation news, Brunch with the Bunny and Egg Hunt is Saturday, April 5th, from 10:30 to 12:30. Registration is required, and spaces do fill up awful fast for that event. Doggy Dash also, please sign up for that. It's a 5K, one-mile walk or run with or without your dog. So please sign up for that. And then our 55 and Better will meet again on Monday, March 10. So please review the guide, and if you have any questions, you know, you can call the center at, the Recreation Center at 708-671-3760, or email us at recreation@pellespark.org. And that concludes my recreation report.
Thank you, Commissioner Patan. Moving on to Building and Public Property Report, Commissioner Wade.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have two things for my report. First, residents who have an open building permit, please remember to call in final inspections that may be required for your project. The purpose of these inspections is to ensure the following: Projects meet building codes, local ordinances, and zoning regulations; monitor construction sites periodically to ensure overall compliance; inspect plumbing, electrical, and other systems to ensure that they meet code; and finally, issue violation notices, hopefully not, and stop work orders until site is compliant. Please contact the village if you notice any work being done outside of work hours. In the permit department, we processed 10 permits from February 5th to February 18th, resulting in $2,175, bringing our fiscal year-to-date to $214,943 in permit fees. And then, finally, I have a, some good news on a project that's been going on for a while. I don't know, maybe 12 to 18, maybe two years ago, back when Mayor Mahoney was still here. We dove into a full development regulation code update for the Village of Pelles Park, and I am happy to announce a draft of the proposed new development code, which are the village's zoning and subdivision regulations, is now available for viewing on the village website, and a hard copy of the draft is also available in the lobby at the Capter Center. This draft document has been prepared by Cameros, a consulting firm the village has been working with on this development code project update. Cameros had previously prepared a technical report, which identified key problems and consistencies and omissions in the current codes, as well as identified potential approaches to dealing with those issues. Based on public comment and staff input, Cameros began the process of developing draft regulations. There was further feedback provided by the consultant, provided to the consultant by the mayor, myself, as the building commissioner, and the chairs of both the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. We will also have a public meeting, March 20th, 7 o'clock here at the Capter Center. The village's consultant will provide an overview of the draft development code provisions and will be, and be available to respond to questions and comments. If you're interested, please, we encourage you to attend. If you do have any questions, feel free to contest us here at the village, and hopefully we have the answers for you. And that, that will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Moving on to Public Health and Safety, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, due to technical glitch, we don't have a police activity report this week, this meeting, but I can assure you, we were out there policing. So that's why we drive around, so you know that we're still working. So I do have a couple of quick announcements. The first is regarding the storm sirens. The regular sirens maintenance will occur the last Friday in March. You've got some time. There are redundancies built into the system, so fear not. If something is impacting us in terms of an emergency service, the notification systems will still be functional. And just a reminder, the reason that we have those sirens outside is that if you happen to be outside during a severe event of some sort, you'll understand that something's going on. They're not necessarily, particularly the way houses are built today, to be relied on when you're inside. So you may or may not hear them, even if they're going off. So I would suggest to you, as the spring is just around the corner, 50 degrees today, unbelievable. I washed the car, that you have another way of getting a weather alert when you're indoors. Most people these days on their cellular devices, the cellular device will interrupt you from what you're doing to remind you that something is happening, even if it's 3 o'clock in the morning. So again, that's going to happen the last Friday in March, which is the 28th. And then a couple of other quick reminders. When it gets cold like it was last week, one of the things that we get concerned about is carbon monoxide poisoning. So those of us particularly that are using gas-fueled appliances, could be a water heater, could be heater, could be your furnace, could be your stove. The bottom line is carbon monoxide can kill you. It's an odorless, tasteless gas that comes as a product of combustion. Got a gas-fired fireplace, carbon monoxide can be generated there as well. So not only should we, do we recommend that you have smoke detectors at home, but that you have at least a carbon monoxide detector located in proximity to your gas-using appliances or permits. Again, you can get combination smoke detector, carbon monoxide detectors. Most smoke detectors, which people don't pay attention to unless they start going off because the battery's dead, and then try and find which one is going. Most smoke detectors have a lifetime, and that's generally somewhere around 10 years. So if you haven't replaced your smoke detectors, I'm not talking about the battery, I'm talking about the whole smoke detector, and they're older than 10 years, someone ought to at least test them and make sure that they're working properly. So carbon monoxide detectors sort of run along the same kind of general idea, that if the carbon monoxide levels are accumulating in your home, they'll sound an alarm. And generally, again, it's useful to have one on each floor or outside of the bedrooms, and they're about the same price as what a good smoke detector is, 30 bucks or so. They can be hardwired, they can be battery-backed up, depends on what you'd like to have happen. So be careful about the carbon monoxide. The third is an unfortunate thing, but it's an important resource that I need to share with the community. We're committed to keeping our, everybody safe, especially when it comes to protecting our online youth. We get a variety of different reports at the police department, and unfortunately, some of them have to do with people posting inappropriate pictures that are generally artificially constructed of other people in, I'll just use the word, unusual or compromising positions. So if this comes to your attention, there's actually an organization that will help you get rid of them. It's called the Take It Down Foundation, and it's a national center program from the missing and exploited children's people. So you might be familiar with them. And basically, it's a free online tool that's designed to help people remove sexually explicit images of themselves that have been shared online without their consent. If you find a image of yourself that's inappropriate, you can submit a report through the Take It Down website. They will verify your identity, your true identity, and then they will take action to remove it. If you have any issues with this, you can always give us a holler, and we'd be more than happy to either help you or walk you through the process. But again, the website is called Take It Down. Let's see. Also, we'd like to acknowledge the work of the Peles Park Police Foundation. This is a nonprofit organization that was founded by members of the community a while ago now, and we've had, up until the point that we had the foundation, we had people reach out to us, say, hey, we'd like to be able to contribute something to show the Peles Park Police Department how much we appreciate their services. And short of Joe taking cash across the desk, which we thought was probably not the world's best idea, we didn't really have a very good way of being able to do that. So one of the local ministers, who's since moved on, Carolyn Baca, who I believe was the police commissioner, as well as the mayor at one point, worked together to form the Peles Park Police Foundation, and is, again, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that accepts donations on behalf of the Peles Park Police Department. Two important issues. The only way the Peles Park Police Foundation reaches out to you as a citizen is through a single mailing every year. I think they went out a couple months ago. They do not call you, unlike the people who do call you and say, this is going to the Peles Park Police Department. It is not going to the Peles Park Police Department. It's going to the union, which is, you know, if you want to contribute to the union of police officers, it will be distributed around all of the unions that are in the local area. If you'd rather keep your donation in Peles Park, we'd suggest that you reach out to the Peles Park Police Foundation. I can help you with that. If you want to send me an email, dpolk@pelespark.org, or if you magically ask your computer or your phone to find the website for the Peles Park Police Foundation, lo and behold, they've got one, and you can donate on the website as well. Chief Miller, anything else you care to add? Thank you for your service, sir. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Moving on to accounts and finances, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a formal report this evening. However, I would be remiss if I did not echo the statements of Brad Porter, thanking our finance director and her staff, which is her, for the outstanding work that she did in, not only did we have a new software program being implemented, but she had to take all of that information, synthesize it, and deal with the auditors in a timely fashion. So I want to publicly acknowledge and thank our finance director for the outstanding work that she has done.
Thank you, Allison.
You and yourself, understood. Gotcha.
Me, myself, and I, right? That's what you're saying over there?
No, it's a staff-wide initiative, but Allison was, was driving the bus, so thank you for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Just want to say that thanks to you last time talking about your text that you got from the tollway, and then they put it in the newspaper. Lo and behold, I got a text asking me to, you know, pay my unpaid toll. I knew it was a scam, thanks to him. So, thanks for, for keeping us all updated. I do not have a report this evening. Deputy Clerk, do you have a report?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Manager Bain? All right. Announcements. Boy, I don't even have any announcements. Wow. All right, so now that moves us to citizens and visitors' comment period. If anybody would like to address the council, now's the time. No takers? All right. I would like to, somebody to make a motion to recess to executive session to discuss appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employee or employees, and to approve and then review for release executive session minutes.
Still moved.
Hearing a motion in second, Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Congratulations again to Mary Ann Parkins, our unsung heroine. Thank you, everyone.